Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. This is the meeting of September tenth twenty twenty four. The board has been in executive session and we are now going to enter our work session. May I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so today we have a special presentation. We are um so pleased to welcome uh Horse Greeley High School senior Reese Wang, who's been a summer intern in town. Um and everyone was so happy and grateful to have you working with us. In town, I heard wonderful things about you, so thank you for helping our staff get through the summer. Um and um Reese is going to present um uh the Millwood Park ADA walkway improvement project, uh something we've been looking forward to hearing about. So Reese, I will give you the floor and uh we can get started.
Thank you so much. Hello everyone, my name is Reese Wang and I'm a student at Horse Greeley High School. So today I'll be presenting about a three D model that I designed for the Millwood Park Walkway Project. To start, let's take a look at the existing conditions and why we needed to change them. The width of the pathway varies quite extremely, ranging from three point five feet to nine point five feet. On average, the width is four feet wide, which is way below the American Disabilities Association requirement of five feet wide. In addition, it currently has varying slopes up to twelve point two percent, way over the ADA requirements of eight point three three percent. And even more over the recommendations of the Department of Transportation, which is at most seven point five percent. Furthermore, there are currently no handrails on the pathway, even though the ADA requires handrails for any slope over five percent. There are also currently no level landings on the platform, which are required for wheelchair users to turn around or for resting points. Last but not least, there's currently no pathway from the main path to the gazebo, making it virtually impossible for any wheelchair users to access it. Sorry. To fix this, the engineering department plans to implement a uniform width of eight feet wide with a slope of five to six percent, way below the ADA requirements. We also plan to add five eight by eight landings, a new pathway from the main path to the gazebo, and a new landing from the bridge to the entrance of the pathway, which ranges from five feet to eight feet wide, creating a smooth transition for wheelchair users. We also plan to implement handrails on both sides. When viewed side by side, you can see the difference in width as well as our new add-ons, such as the eight by eight landings and the new path to the gazebo. This is a bird's eye view of the model that I created. When viewed side by side with the proposed plans, you can see the key points of the new project. For example, here is the pathway that is to be built. This is the playground and the tennis court. This is the river and the parking lot, and over here is the baseball field. When creating this model, I was very careful to get every angle exact. For example, the entrance is exactly eleven degrees and the entrance to the tennis court is exactly forty five degrees. Here are some different views of my model from the front to the playground and to the tennis court respectively, which we'll take a closer look at in a second. This is a close-up of the entrance to the pathway. It's eight feet wide with a six percent grade and it allows access to the gazebo. Since it's relatively flat and close to the ground, we only require a handrail on the south side of the pathway. This is an entrance from our pathway to the playground. We have handrails on both sides leading up to the playground, but on the top we have a level landing with no handrails, allowing easy access for people wanting to go around the pathway without handrails blocking them. This also allows easy access for the parks department to do their regular checks and maintenances. This is our entrance to the tennis court. Similarly, we also have a landing at the top without handrails for the same reason as the playground, allowing easy access for people. This is a close-up of our access from the pathway to the baseball field, allowing people to go onto the pathway or onto the baseball field. It has a four slope of four horizontal for one vertical, aka one fourth slope, which provides a convenient walking conditions for people. And similarly, it also allows access for the parks department and visitors. Last but not least, this is a close look at our walkway to the gazebo. The gazebo is often used for having lunch or when or to take shelter under the rain. Previously, there was no current way for wheelchair users to access the gazebo, but with this new walkway, they can access it safely and easily. This also provides easier access for non-disabled people because the impervious surface allows them to avoid stepping in mud during poor weather conditions. Here's some more pictures of my model from different angles. Um on the left side, you can see a close-up of our entrance to the pathway. In the middle, here's a look at what it looks like from walking from the walk playground down the pathway. And here's a look at uh from the side to the gazebo and to the playground. On the right side, you can see what it looks like walking from the tennis court down onto the walkway. And now if you would be so kind, I'd like to show you my model in person. Alright, so this is the three D model that I designed. You can take a three D look around it. For example, this is the entrance to the walkway. This is the baseball court and this is the access road on the baseball court to the pathway. Here is the entrance to the playground and the level landing without any handrails. And here's the pathway to the tennis court. And here is the road to the gazebo that is newly implemented. I also added dimensions on this model for one second. As you can see, I added dimensions. For example, it is eight feet wide and twenty feet long for each ramp and also has a rise of one foot high.
There's a one-foot concrete foundation underneath
Yes.
entirety of the sidewalk?
Yes, but it's one foot high for every run of twenty feet.
Got you, got you.
And this is the bridge. We added some people on the walkway to have a good scale comparison of what it would look like in comparison to the height of the railings. And yes, this is a look at my three D model from very far out. Alright, thank you so much for having me here. And I would especially like to thank Mr. Robert Seoli and Assistant Town Engineer Miguel Fabriel for this incredible opportunity to work with you.
Uh I think this is going to make the park so much more attractive and obviously accessible. And uh I I think you did a fantastic job. Can you tell us more about what exactly? I mean, your role was to create this entire model. Was that your your project for the summer?
Yes, I worked on this model, but the design was completely the engineering department's and Miguel's and Robert's.
But you created the computer computerized model?
Yes.
Yeah, it's very, very well done.
Thank you very much.
And uh yeah, it helps us to know what what to expect.
Yes.
So I'm really looking forward to seeing the actual the actual park and pathways. But um congratulations and I'm glad you had a great experience with the town. And I know that everyone had only wonderful things to say about working with you.
Thank you.
And uh we're all so appreciative of of your work.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
So I I know that uh I know Bob wanted to uh to thank Reese as well. And um when she presented this to the staff, we were we were blown away. I know Bob was really impressed all summer and uh and has has raved about the work that Reese has done. And I know you fit in really well with Miguel and with Bob. And uh so I know he he'd like to say a word too and and to just
Thank you, my man. Thank nice supervisor, ten members of the board. Uh Reese has been an absolute pleasure to work with. Uh she's been involved in many aspects, working with Miguel, working with Terry, working with Ass, who was another exemplary intern we had this summer. Engineer, design, research, construction, inspection. She she was willing, really able to willing to do everything and anything that we asked of her. She's been diligently working on this volunteering services, by the way, all summer. And she dedicated over a hundred plus hours to produce this model tonight for the town's presentation. Uh I wish Reese all the best in the civilian career. I wish I have no doubt she'll have an illustrious career. And I'm sure that her mom and dad are proud of her accomplishments. And Reese, thank you so very much. Absolute pleasure and don't forget to fill out and apply for summer intern next year.
Absolutely, or during the year. Um yeah, Rob, Rob, I'm sorry you're not here. I would like the board to take a picture with Reese. Yes, okay, let's do it.
Thank you so much, it was really
Thank you, Reese.
Thank you.
We're so impressed by you, really.
By the way, this project is just started, the walkway project.
It's really terrific.
Yeah, yeah, just a little housekeeping. We are starting the project this week, so we are closing. I think the tennis courts and the playground, the access to that's restricted until we finish, so.
Okay.
We're gonna stand away.
Christina, you're gonna
You're gonna
Yeah.
Or you
No, no.
Yeah, I'll plug that in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
One more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, town board, good night.
Good night, Bob.
Good night. I just want I say I just want one and only photo.
Superpose him.
Good night, everyone.
Reese, can you superpose him? You have the skill.
It's better off than that individual.
Rob, how long do we think it's gonna take?
I'm not sure, a couple weeks.
Couple weeks.
Not too bad.
No, it's not too bad.
It's gonna make such a difference.
Yeah, I I will say the engineering department, we've worked on this for almost a year. Uh Miguel's been amazing. Um but we did work with Ike and Christine too to to I think to keep the ball field. We're to reschedule games when we could and to keep access to the ball field and limit the amount of time that we had to restrict access to everything else. So obviously, we had to do it, we had to work it in at some point. We had the softball season over the summer and you know, getting ready for fall ball and everything else. So uh everybody's done a great job on this.
Yeah, I'm glad they didn't have to miss their season.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for working that out.
That model made it so easy to visualize, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, we've got administrative items. Who's gonna do that?
Rob.
Rob?
Okay.
Uh just a couple administrative items. Uh we have the authorization to utilize the public safety trust. Uh a couple years ago, board member uh Lauren Leven, we donated some money um to be put in trust for the police department to use for safety initiatives. Um and the chief is is going to use those. Um I think he's getting a couple of bicycles and some other equipment for uh for the police department. So uh that fits with the with the use of the trust and how it was settled up uh set up. Uh authorization to attend a conference for the police, I think that is the uh I believe that's a women in law enforcement uh conference. Uh we have the au- authorization to accept the vehicle auction results. Jeremy, you'll be happy. I sorry, I don't have the the running total like I usually have for you, but I'll get that for you. Um we have the authorization to approve the banner request request for the Newcastle Historical Society. Um this next one for the coach bus bids. Uh oh, uh this is authorization to obtain bid for the coach bus, okay. These are the uh recreation um programs that are outside of town for the coach buses. Um I think last week we or the other week, we went out to bid for the um bus bid for the after-school programs in town. Uh so this is for the programs outside of town. And uh we have the authorization to approve the license agreement with Westchester County regarding the uh radio communication system. That's for the police.
Okay, well that does it for the work session. So we're going to have a situation where we are half an hour early and I'm not sure that we can have a board meeting
We can.
before it's been noticed. Isn't that right, Michael?
That's correct.
We're going to have to wait. Um
Wow.
Yeah, this is unusual.
Lino, Lino has warned us a few times about this.
Well, this
I said usual, I mean the first time usual.
Lino has said we should be putting on our agenda
It's never happened.
Or as soon as
or as soon as the work session is over.
I think we will be doing that.
So from now on.
Was was this because the um overly district, the public hearing for that was noticed at a certain time?
And we'll never be ahead again.
I think it was. So back when we were setting that up a couple months ago, uh I think that we, yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
A couple months ago, we had set this as the time, not really understanding what the agenda would look like leading up to that.
Of course, yeah.
And we were kinda, I suppose we we could have started exactly a little bit later and maybe
Well, um I think we have to adjourn the work session and then we'll have to take half hour break, unfortunately.
run I did too.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will be back at seven thirty. Right. Okay, we're back and good evening again, everyone. And uh we are at the Tuesday, September tenth twenty twenty four meeting of the town board of the town of Newcastle. Uh I'd like to have a motion to open up our town board meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we will start with announcements. Um Rob, are there any announcements for the day, for the meeting?
Uh Christina, do you just wanna mention about the school tax collection this weekend?
Sure. Town, um excuse me, sorry. School tax bills have been mailed, you should have received them. Um they are due no later than September thirtieth for the first half school taxes. Have any questions? Please contact us in the town board office.
Okay. Um I'll put that in the newsletter, so it goes out there. If you wanna send me a full
Yes, I will.
blur with all the details.
Yes.
If there's anything else you need to say, so let me know.
Yeah, so it's very brief tonight, so I'll definitely send you something with more info.
Okay, and uh for my supervisors report, I would first like to wish a very happy birthday to Christina Pace.
Yeah.
I believe it's her birthday this very day, so happy birthday, Christina.
Happy birthday.
Um I would like to remind also to remind everyone that tomorrow is our September eleventh memorial ceremony at six P M at Gedney Park. So we invite everyone to join us to remember the victims and their families and the survivors and the first responders and all those who put themselves um in in danger to save others. So we uh we hope that you come and join us to honor their memories and uh be there with us. Um in addition, this week we have Community Day, this Saturday, September fourteenth, which will be from ten A M to two P M. Um it's an event sponsored by the Rotary Club at the Chapala train station. Um it's a free event and it's a great way to um come back from summer vacation and meet, see your neighbors and friends again. And it brings together all the community organizations, town, our committees, our schools and school-related organizations, our volunteer corps, vendors and religious groups and much more. There'll be food and drinks and a lot of fun activities for the kids, including a bouncy house. So come and learn about the town and all the activities that go on here. Come and see your friends and it's a good time every year. Um it's uh the it's the town has been doing this for over forty years. And I wanna thank the Rotary Club and Holly is uh on the board of Rotary. Is this the forty-first year?
I don't have a count, to be honest.
Do you? Okay, but the town has been doing this for over forty years and it's it it it's a great event. So hope you everyone will join us there too.
Could I just add a couple of things?
Yeah, absolutely.
The mobile passport truck will be at Community Day.
Oh, that's awesome.
So if you need to renew or
That's awesome.
obtain, they also have the ability to print your pictures, so one-stop shop. And uh the New York Blood Center will bring the bloodmobile, so you can also uh donate to um to the blood blood bank.
And you don't have to sign up for that in advance, did you? You can do it, you can sign up when you're there.
They'll take walk-ins if um if they have the capacity. Or were you referring to the blood donations?
To the blood, well actually both.
Um passport, I think is walk-in only. Um the Blood Center, you can make an appointment, but they'll take walk-ins if they can if they have the ability.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Um and do we have a town administrators report?
Jill, do you have anything?
Can I hear you, Jill?
Uh you're on mute, Jill.
Sorry, um I just wanted to maybe mention um the professional training that we just did with all of our staff Sorry, Holly, just wanted to and um our Millwood um Walkway uh project. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Um and now I'd like to announce something very special. Our town planner, Sabrina Charny Hall, has been awarded the twenty twenty four Groundbreakers Award from the Paced Land Use Law Center. Uh and she's been selected for this year. It's um it this was established in nineteen ninety-three. Um the Paced Land Use Center is dedicated to fostering the development of sustainable communities through the promotion of innovative land use strategies and collaborative decision-making techniques, as well as leadership training, research, education, and technical assistance. And uh the Groundbreakers Award is given to a graduate or group of graduates who've done exemplary work in a community or a region using the types of land use and decision-making tools and techniques taught at the Land Use uh Center. And so we wanna congratulate Sabrina. Um Sabrina has uh, let's see, you have been doing this, let's see, you've been in this program since two thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And uh and most recently in twenty twenty-three. So you've been doing this work for a very long time and we wanna congratulate you. The town is very proud of you and we usually recognize people in the community, but we rarely get a chance to recognize someone on our staff or an external award. So we're we're glad to recognize you and congratulate you. And we have a proclamation
Oh, wow.
to give you. So we'd like to hand this to you officially and take a picture with you.
This is a really, really quick listen, 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 very, very you are always available, you are always knowledgeable, you're always quick with your response and substantive and you can explain it to someone who doesn't understand it, sometimes four times or six times. Um not to me, may I speak on behalf of
Say sometimes to us for five times.
Yeah, same, you know.
I know people appreciate the knowledge that and skill that you have or that it takes to do what you do. So sincerely and genuinely, uh heartfelt, congrats.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It is an honor to work for you all, for the town. I I really love what I do and who I do it for, so thank you very much.
Well deserved.
Definitely.
You sound surprised, yeah.
Yes, very surprised.
Yeah, this is really cool. See, we just put that back.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sabrina, it's deserved for sure. We're lucky to have you.
So
There we go.
Alright, let's get, you know what, can everyone shift a little bit?
Together.
Yeah. Alright, yes, okay, one, two, three. Thank you, one more. Great, thank you.
Thank you all so much. They'll do it at the Land Use Law Center, the annual conference, digital presentation. Yeah, it's exciting. Very surprising, thank you. That goes with me everywhere.
Okay, so now I'd like to turn to um a commitment that the town has made to recognize um all the cultural heritage months recognized by uh the United States government. And we are in September, and September fifteenth through October fifteenth is National Hispanic Heritage Month. So we'd like to recognize that with a proclamation that I can read. And um Rob or and or Jill, can you tell us, is this something that we actually vote on that would be in the resolutions? Or um I can certainly read it now at this time.
Absolutely.
Um no, we don't do that, okay. So it's an item on our agenda, so I will go ahead and read it, um unless somebody else would like to.
No?
Alright, so National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Whereas the United States of America is built upon the rich and diverse history of generations of Latinos whose aspirations, contributions, and achievements have helped shape our nation. Whereas Latinos have made invaluable contributions to the development of the United States as doctors, engineers, artists, entrepreneurs, and leaders in science, business, labor, government, the military, and grassroots movements. Whereas the determination, faith, and commitment of the Latino community have helped propel the United States towards achieving its highest ideals of prosperity, opportunity, and justice. Whereas the contributions of Hispanic writers, scientists, soldiers, doctors, entrepreneurs, academics, and leaders have continuously enriched the United States, while the music, art, literature, and creativity of Hispanic people have added immeasurable value to American culture. Whereas tens of thousands of Latinos continue to serve our nation and inspire future generations, including distinguished individuals such as Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, Medal of Freedom recipient Dr. Julieta Garcia, and the late police officers Wilbert Mora and Jason Rivera, who are posthumously awarded the Medal of Valor. Whereas the deep-rooted values of family and faith are central to many Hispanic communities and continue to inform and shape the moral foundation of the United States. Whereas the United States Congress by Public Law one hundred dash four O two has designated September fifteenth through October fifteen of each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Latino history is American history, demonstrating that the pursuit of opportunity and equality for all people is central to the American experience. Whereas diversity is one of the greatest strengths of the United States and the contributions of Hispanic Americans are critical to ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, can thrive and realize their full potential. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby proclaims September fifteenth through October fifteen to be National Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle and expresses its gratitude for the lasting contributions of Hispanic Americans to the culture, strength, and progress of the United States. That is done. Okay, very good. Okay, and now we will move to public comment, new business. Um this is public comment, that is not um the public hearing that we have scheduled for Indian Brook, Quoton, Gorge, Watershed District. This is public comment on all other topics. So please come to the microphone, um state your name, um the town you reside in and
Sure. Hi, uh
Do you want to make your comment?
Hello everyone, I talked to a few of you individually. Uh my name's John Carey. I live in Hoboken for the last many years, but my hometown is here in Chappaqua. My parents moved to Saint John's Place up in King Street Hill back in nineteen fifty-two. They had six kids and their family home was there until after my father's death in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh we were active members of Saint John and Mary uh in all sorts of capacities. Boy Scouts, early members, number fourteen in Chapagapoole. We all graduated from Greeley and we're active in sports, community, daycare, counselors. I painted fire hydrants for the town, all sorts of things. I'm here tonight to speak in regard to my youngest brother, Specialist Fourth Class Christopher J. Carey. Chris was the youngest of the six of us. Uh he graduated from Horse Greeley in nineteen seventy-eight. Chris volunteered after college uh for the army and he was killed at Fort Stewart, Georgia on April ninth uh in nineteen eighty-six in service to his country. He was a helicopter crew member on a Chinook, which is a big double-bladed, you know, helicopters, uh which had a head-on collision that night with a Cobra helicopter during uh night training. So it's all, you know, in some, it's in the past, but uh it's come up again. Uh so Chris is buried over at Fairreach Cemetery. I continue to be a trustee there and my folks are both buried there and a number of people in the community. I come up occasionally for this and sit over in a meeting on the other side courtesy of the crowds. Recently, some of Chris's childhood friends and contemporaries contacted our family to advocate that he should be on the war memorial uh here in town. This is uh we used to walk down there when it was the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and it was always a special place. So uh it wasn't brought up by our family, but we uh my brothers and I and my sisters have talked about it along with other people. And uh we appreciate others remembering Chris, uh some of his his classmates and things. But uh our family would like to at this point advocate for it. And I've had discussions along those lines with various people. So I'll leave it at that. Um I I I would for it. And I've had discussions along those lines with various people. So I'll leave it at that. Um I I I'll be up here on Saturday at Community Day and anybody like to talk then I'm glad to. So but thanks and appreciate your consideration of this. Alright, so uh I guess doing well.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank your brother posthumously for his ser for his service to our country and and recognize your family for the
Oh, thank you. Yes. Well done.
sacrifices that that you made and um um I it's always good to have
Yeah.
the town's history recognized and um i- it's good to hear your history and your family's background here in town.
He was he was a good guy.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
So sorry we lost him and uh I didn't expect ever to be standing here advocating for this. And it was basically a couple Freddie Marzella, Mark Westfall, Tom McLaughlin, who used to be a cop here in town, and others that came to us out of the blue and uh were advocating for this. So um I guess it's your decision. Um
It it's important. I think Jeremy has some news for us.
Yeah, the update, the update and and Jill can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but you had reached out or or Frederick Frederick did reached out. I put you or someone I remember initially who was in touch, but with Jill and and Jim McCauley who got involved and I'm looking to the screen because Jill has a big screen to the left. Uh and I understand that right now the process is trying to identify who can do the actual um marking or or engraving
That's great.
uh on the memorial. And Jill, if you could just, if that's accurate.
Yes.
Yes.
And if that if that's true, I know my brother's namesake, uh Major Christopher Carey uh is gonna gonna be home. The hope has been that uh we might be able to do something on Veterans Day which would be appropriate uh if that's possible. And uh Chris is coming east from Oregon where he's in charge of emergency services, I believe, in Portland, Oregon, which is a wonderful place. Or maybe he's the number two guy, but to be in charge of emergency services, but uh uh that's most appreciated. So thanks for everybody here in town.
Yeah.
It's great to see uh good things going on here. It's always fun to be back up. I'm gonna be running back down to New Jersey and watching something on television this evening.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
It's very good to meet you. Oh, make sure we have your contact information when it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I will leave this, there's probably spelling errors there.
When it's done, we will contact you.
And I will, I'll if you if
Christina, do you wanna do you wanna take it so that
If you're, I I could, I can get it over.
we we state, um you know, we'll keep this in a in a safe place and
Yes, we find out, we know your family.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
we will be in touch when it's done.
We'll send you an update.
Okay.
So soon you'll know.
Yeah.
And and I I'll be around on on Saturday. So maybe 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 one of my other brothers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carey. We'll look for you on Saturday.
Who's that? Who wouldn't? My brother Joe'd be here tonight, but he's at a planning board meeting himself in Jersey, New Jersey. So that's what we do. Okay.
Thank you so much.
We're speaking of service. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um is there anyone else here for public comment other than the public hearing? No, anyone online for public comment for new business?
No, I haven't heard of any.
No? Okay, so at this time I would like to open up the public hearing for the um Indian Brook Croton George Croton Gorge Watershed Protection Overlay District. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um Sabrina, do you want to give us a very quick synopsis
Sure.
of this before we begin?
Sure. Um the Indian Brook Croton Gorge Watershed Overlay Protection Zone is an effort that was initiated uh by the Town of Cortland and the other four municipalities, Newcastle being one of them, uh the Town and Village of Osning and Croton, the Village of Croton-on-Hudson. The intention was to bring um everybody that was within the Indian Brook Watershed and the Croton Gorg Gorge Watershed, which provide drinking water sources to the Osnings and Croton-on-Hudson um with the same level of environmental protections um or as close to as we could possibly get. The Town of Newcastle um we exist in the headwaters of that watershed and we already have very stringent regulations compared to the villages and the Town of Cortland. So it was really an exercise in bringing, trying to bring everybody as close to our protections as possible. And there are some changes for us in this overlay protection zone. So you know, we did not um we we are making changes um or proposed changes as part of this legislation. This is the, I think, third public hearing that the town is holding, Town Board is holding, to consider this legislation. We've received some comments. Um the intention is after the close of public hearing and if you deem to extend a written comment period, after all of that occurs, I will prepare a red line version of the legislation for you to consider changes, substantive changes that the public has asked for and even minor changes if they seem to make sense. All of our changes need to be submitted to DEC and they have to bless them for them to go into effect. We, all of the other municipalities, the four municipalities, the the Town and Village of Osning, Croton-on-Hudson, and the Town of Cortland have all adopted this legislation. Um Croton-on-Hudson and the Town of Cortland did submit minor changes to DEC and got approval. So um there is precedent for allowing individuality in this overlay protection zone. Uh but for the most part, the the sustenance of the legislation is the same in each of our municipalities. So tonight, um you're having a public hearing to hear from the community about specifics within the legislation. Um we are listening. We will make red line changes for those things that make sense and ultimately the changes will be per the decision of the Town Board at a future meeting.
Um quick, uh I'd like to ask, how long does it take for the DEC to approve? So would the board pass the legislation and then get approval for what we?
Well, I can handle it any number of ways. You can hold off on the decision um with a draft. I can send it and ask for a quick turnaround.
Okay.
Uh the people, uh the the folks who would look at this, I think, will do it in a pretty timely manner.
Timely meaning a week, two weeks?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks, okay. Alright, um and um I know that there are few people here to speak. I just want
Yeah.
um everyone in the overlay district to know that we are aware that, you know, people on the west side of town feel a bit overlooked and uh I just want to acknowledge that and let you know that we definitely do care about your area. Um when we're done with the public hearing, I'd like to maybe set up a meeting wi- with all of you to discuss any and all other issues that are on your minds. And I just want you to know that we we are here for you. We will be making some changes, like Sabrina said, based on your comments. Um we want you to know that you are an equal part of our community. And uh we want to hear more from you and we want to be we want you to know that we're accessible. So I will come to you, you could come and see me here, or I can come to one of you in your homes, or we can meet wherever is convenient. So um I would like to, you know, change the narrative of what 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 has been and move forward in a different way. So I appreciate your being here and uh we will start and feel free to come on up and make your comments. Um just uh come up and uh state your name and your address and uh you can proceed.
Okay.
Uh my name is Gustavin. I live at seventy eight Glendale Road in Osning. Where Osning is the address, I guess. Newcastle is the place. Uh so last time I asked for the basis or the documentation for this overlay. Well, what was the scientific and evidentiary basis for what we're about to consider? And I think the town supervisor of uh Osning spoke and mentioned something and I spoke to her afterwards. And she gave me the number of her planning consultant. I spoke to her and I got referred to Sabrina, I believe, who then referred me to Cortland. So I spoke to the person in Cortland, Michelle Robbins, and she told me that there's a document entitled Indian Brook Croton Gorge Watershed Conservation Action Plan. A cooperative eh cooperative effort among the Town of Cortland, Village of Croton, the Town of Newcastle, Town of Osning, Village of Osning, New York State DEC, Hudson River Estuary Program, and the Westchester County. So I looked it up. Uh there are a few things on it that I think are interesting. So I'd like to, if you would bear with me, let me see if I have them here. So it's one more page, sorry dude. Ah here it is. I just read excerpts from it. It's on page two dash fourteen of the report. The Indian Brook Reservoir serves as a drinking water source for the Town and Village of Osning. The overall water quality rating based on the Indian Brook stream for the resident reservoir was good. Portions of the Indian Brook that run parallel to Glendale Road and eventually discharge into the reservoir, which is where I live and I think most, a lot of the hundred and two homes are facing. Uh eventually discharge into the reservoir might contribute stormwater pollutants to the reservoir. The key word there is might. There's not finding that anything happening on Glendale Road is discharging anything that's harmful. And I don't think there's any evidence, whatever that anybody produced, that anything in this area of a hundred and two homes has harmed in any way the watershed. Okay, uh and then it talks about runoff discharges in the stream during storm events through outfalls or sheet flow. That's one thing. The second is, there's a mention about people who live there. Some of the residents in the Town of Newcastle and Cortland have private drinking water wells. Your blessing.
Thank you.
Currently, no government oversight regarding monitoring water quality exists. It is the homeowner's responsibility to his, for his or her well water, which is the way it is today. And again, there's nobody in the hundred and two homes that has made any complaint about their well water or it being bad from pollutants or anything like that. There's just no evidence of any harm. And there's and the idea that it might have some effect in some future point seems to me a stretch to impose this overlay on the just a hundred and two homes that are involved. Okay, the other thing is, this study was done in two thousand, started in two thousand and three, I think, about, and the report is two thousand and seven. So when I spoke to Ms. Robbins, who's the planning person in Cortland, I asked her, well, does the watershed change over time? And her response was, it does, but not substantially. So the hundred and two homes are at the very edge of this boundary of the overlay. So a small change could affect those homes, that they wouldn't even be involved in the watershed anymore. It's almost twenty years ago that they made this uh report. Last point. This is sort of a little bit, a little bit of irony and it's sort of what you were you were speaking about uh uh before about uh uh the wet the west side of Newcastle. One of the recommendations, the goal is
Mr. Topman, can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, of course, sorry. So one of the things in the report is the goal is to develop and implement stormwater management practices that will improve water quality. One of those is municipal residential curb site leaf collection programs should be developed. They should consider street sweeping and focus on timing of beneficial to stormwater quality. Now, this is a sort of, not exactly on this point, but the point I'm making is, it's ironic that we are gonna be subject maybe to this proposal. I've never seen anybody clean any of our leaves, ever. Nobody comes anywhere near that street to do any of this kind of stuff, even though it's recommended here. So it's sort of ironic to adopt some, one thing and then all the other things that the town's supposed to do, they don't adopt. This is a side point. I'm not being too much cynical about it. And I appreciate, by the way, the offer. I thought it was very, very, very nice. It was, you know, 'cause we do sort of feel like a little left out sometimes.
Yeah, I don't want you to feel that way.
Okay, I think that's all I have. And thank you for your time and I'm sorry to take in much of it, 'cause I know there are other things to do tonight.
You don't think you're on topic.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Oh yeah, it's, I'm sorry, one more thing. Given all of this, the last time I mentioned the idea that some of these proposals were in other sections called for a permit. In other words, the option that people could come and say, look, my situation is that I don't have any chance of hurting the watershed if I do X, which is eh in the proposal. Instead of an absolute bar to having people not being able to do things, if you have a permit provision, like you have in other sections of the environmental law in Newcastle, then you have some flexibility. Uh and I think I pointed out last time, somebody has to walk on their lawn to get to their house and they're elderly and they want to make a pavement, they may not be able to do it under this thing. But if you have a permit situation, it allows with some flexibility to deal with those kind of problems. So you can sort of have the cake and eat it too. You can have a proposal, but have a little flexibility to deal with the situation where it really be harmful to somebody. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anne Martin. I'm at one fifty five Fox Avenue in Osning, in Newcastle. So I'm not sure this is kind of, can I ask some questions to
Well, this is really a public hearing.
You can ask your questions, but we can't respond with answers, right?
That's correct, yes. The any questions you have will be taken under advisement, but uh there it uh public uh hearing is not
Oh, well, I was just wondering, I I guess I think I'm a little behind, I haven't been keeping up. Did I, has Osning passed this and
facility for a Q and A.
They have.
Yes, they also ev-
When did they pass it?
All of the other municipalities adopted, I think, that the uh the Town and Village of of Osning adopted in late August or early September. We have yet to get a copy of this one.
I think it was August thirteenth.
We have yet to get a copy of their resolutions, but they did adopt.
Okay, and Cro- Croton as well?
Cro- Co- Cortland and Croton-on-Hudson as well.
So so Osning, Cortland, and Croton.
Osning Town, Osning Village, Croton-on-Hudson, and the Town of Cortland.
And so. Okay, um great, thank you. The last time, the last time we were here, we wanted to wait until they passed it and then I didn't know where that was, so, okay.
Yeah. Correct.
Um because I thought it was important that we saw what their restrictions were before we bound ourselves, so.
We waited on purpose for that.
Great, thank you. Um and then so I, my other question, I'm not, I'm just not really sure if I can ask it, is if you wanted to does does, if you have a property that's, we have nine acres, nine point nine acres, so we technically could subdivide it. Does that, does this kind of imposition overlay re now massively, 'cause you're like, oh, well, an existing property, it'll prevent you from expanding too much, but a a brand new property, this will create quite a restriction on if you if you were able to subdivide the parcel you currently have.
Just gonna advise the board that um you you we're opining on a, you know, on 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 a legal issue, legal land use issue that that's uh, you know, uh i- integrated with the um with the overlay district and it's probably, you know, uh not advisable to, you know, uh render an opinion on that.
Could I just No, sir, it was comments, not questions, so I uh, um okay, I appreciate that we waited until the other you know, we still have major concerns as you as you understand, um 'cause it does, it limits our what we can do with our property. And so we, you know, we have a lot of concerns, but we can discuss them with you when we may be able to, so I appreciate that. That's all.
Okay. Right.
Thank you.
Can I just make, just raise one, bring, quick issue. I I think the question which when we can't answer, not equipped to ask, but I think what what resident was getting at maybe was if there was anything that would prevent going forward a subdivision that could have happened prior to this legislation. That that's that's the gist, I think, of the question, so.
Right, I I think that's right.
So I I I think it's a fair question, just how do you know how to answer.
It is a fair question. It's a legal question and we're not equipped to answer right now.
Right.
Right.
Let's not make sure I understood your question.
It is.
Yeah, no, you you got the gist of it, is it's, you know, so actually who who would I go to to ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Make a book, um just.
Okay, you have to talk into the microphone, but the question is being asked of who you could go to to ask um to ask that question and um
Yes.
you you would have to first start by calling our staff. Who would uh she call on our staff, Sabrina?
H- honestly, if, when we get a lot of calls on a daily basis of somebody who would like to subdivide their property,
Hmm.
we refer them to the town's codes and we suggest that they get a land use professional, an engineer, or an architect to um go consult with them, see if there's opportunity due to septic systems, drinking water wells um and other requirements to determine whether or not the subdivision is feasible.
But they're not gonna know eh impen- impending legislation that hasn't yet been passed, right? So they're they're not gonna be able to advise me on something that is now not on the existing code. I mean, I would take a
Okay. So we're we're having a lot of back and forth outside of the microphone. I I think you would have to, you know, take it offline and
Oh, yes, Sabrina.
talk to Sabrina or Sabrina could direct you to the to the appropriate person
Okay.
to ask the questions to, okay.
Thank you.
But thank you. Um can you have the next person come up, please? Anyone else? No? Okay, yeah.
My name is Pam Edwards. I live at four Alapartis Road in Osning, Newcastle, west end of Newcastle. And I spoke about this at the last meeting, so I'll keep it quick. But um my major issue with all of this is not being able to apply salt or um to de- deice the driveway. I live on Alapartis, Alapar- our house is built into a hill. Um we, Alapartis Road itself can be treacherous. I don't know if you've ever been there or not, but in the winter time, we've seen so many cars crash into the stone wall across the street from our house. And um if we can't apply salt on our driveway, we can easily just go right off the road, driveway into the road and crash into the house across the street from us. We also could could get the oil truck up. Um there's part, a part of the driveway that we, my husband and I could easily slip and fall on. We both had multiple surgeries, so it really is a dangerous situation not to be able to apply salt. And I think that's pretty extreme. Um that's my major issue. By the way, I wanna thank you for, you know, being so open and um welcoming tonight. I really appreciate that.
Yes, and and just to ease the pain, we will be looking at the salting situation, so I I will just say that. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Alright, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um is there anyone online to make a public comment?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, then.
I'm sorry, we have one hand that just went up.
Okay. Alright, hello. You see your, you see your name, but nevertheless, please state your name and your address and show.
Hello. Hi, I'm. Sure, uh Nancy Jane, twenty Alapartis Road.
Hello? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Uh Nancy Jane, twenty Alapartis Road.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Um I just wanted to second that same concern that was just voiced right now regarding the icing. Um my mom lives there and she, the, her entire driveway is a big hill. Um and she needs to be able to clean and deice it and salt it. Um it would be a huge hazard for her to be able to to go out, leave her house or the other way.
To go out, leave her house or the other way. So I just wanted to second that as well.
So I just wanted to second that as well.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else online?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing. And we will leave the record open until um September seventeenth. Um for written comments, September seventeenth, at what time did we say? Is it five o'clock or or noon? Sometimes we.
Five o'clock.
It wa- was two.
That's two noon.
Okay.
So moved.
And um was the supervisor gonna direct Sabrina to create a redlined version?
S- second.
Yeah.
Was he there?
Oh yeah, Sabrina did discuss it, but um.
Yeah, after the close of public hearing, after they make this motion, then you would direct that.
Okay. Okay, may I have a second? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Sabrina, you will prepare a redlined version of the legislation to bring to us at our next meeting?
At your next meeting following the closing.
The meeting of the twenty fourth.
Right, following the close of the written comment period. And we will um consider the redlined version for um for passage. We will have have that discussion and we will also discuss whether to pass the legislation prior to the approval of the amendments or wait for the approvals. So you can perhaps um advise us as to what is the better process
I will look into that before that. Mm-hmm.
to to adhere to and we'll make that decision at that time. Okay, alright, thank you. Um and so um I believe we have reached uh a resolution.
That works, yeah.
Resolutions and uh we will start with our consent agenda. Jeremy?
Yeah, can I, one quick question, one question, Sabrina. If if we were to make a change that was different and consistent with the other folks,
Well, do you have something to say before?
Would that require that the other municipalities reopen their?
No, we were to- we were told by DEC that it is okay if the municipalities are not adopting the exact same legislation.
Okay, that's great.
Like, yeah.
Thank you.
I I mean, you, the land use in each of the municipalities is different, right? So different regulations for the municipalities as well.
So they're not all married together, they're gonna be separate.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. And again, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the work. Thank you, Sabrina. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good night and and I'll I'll be in touch, let me know who who would be a point person.
Alright. I, I.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I move to adopt items one through six as listed on the consent agenda below.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to hi, uh I move to authorize the hiring of Paul Hennig, and I apologize, to the position of fourth grade police officer with the Newcastle Police Department and an annual salary of eighty thousand nineteen dollars ninety four cents effective October fifteenth of this year, and the date Westchester County approves resignation reinstatement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh I move to accept the resignation of Dorothy Endito for the position of member as a beautification advisory board, DAB, effective December twelfth, twenty 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 three. Part of me, the town would like to thank Dorothy for her service.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know you wanna read all of them, but Jen, go ahead.
I move to authorize the appointment of Alexandra Clark as a member of beautification advisory board for a term of three years effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved.
Number five.
I moved to um, okay, I'll now to five, okay. I move to accept the resignation of Phil Luria as member of the Board of Assessment Review effective August tenth, twenty twenty four. The town would like to thank Phil for his twenty years of dedicated service on the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Amanda Goldberg as a member of the Board of Assessment Review for the remainder of an existing term effective through September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How are you doing?
I move to author- authorize the reappointment of the following individuals to the conservation board for a term of two years effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty six, Victoria Azapieti as chair and Angela Morgan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who do the last?
Sure. I move to close public, the public hearing on the Indian Brook Crosh- Croton Gorge Watershed Protection Overlay District and keep it open for written comment until September seventeenth, twenty twenty four at twelve P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um motion taken?
Someone?
No, you guys make the motion to adjourn.
Uh, so, uh, uh, so moved.
Second.
All.